Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of Smith Vocational Agricultural School Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 15th. I'd like to ask for a call to order.
Mr. Kaling?
Present.
Dr. Spencer Robinson here. Mr. Quadro.
Present.
Mayor Ciara, I anticipate coming. And then Dr. Pearson Campbell, if you have time.
May we stand? Please. Mr. President.
Smith Vocational Agricultural High School Mission Statement is to... Smith Vocational Agricultural High School is to prepare students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs.
Thank you very much. This evening, under our participation by the public, does anybody have any statement? We have a guest for us tonight, former trustee, Mr. John Cotton. I really wanted to thank John for his years of service and the board made a special request to Mass Association of Schools and Colleges and about a lifetime award for Mr. Cotton for all the years that he has served here and the hard work that he's put in to protect the Alder Smith Will and knew it inside and out, could thread it like a needle. And the thing is that, John, we wanted to turn around and let you know personally how we feel from our heart for what you've done. And at this time, Andy, please. Glenn? years of service as a strong advocate for children in your unsuffered contributions to Smith Vocational Agricultural School District presented by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, November 2022. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I would like to say just a couple of things.
Please.
I missed by one year. I started in 75 in this school. I retired in 2000. 2001, I was not connected to the school in any way, except as courses of retirement. From that point on to the present time, I have been connected as a trustee, Gilad ended, but I'm still connected. My son Burke's here. So, thank you.
So, in regards to the participation by the trustees, Julie? Are you...I will, but I want to speak to you.
Yeah. I'd like to report on the excellent experience I had at the annual conference of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. My favorite part was being able to connect at such an important learning event with my fellow trustees, Mr. Kaling, Mr. Quadro, and Mayor Shara. We miss Dr. Pearson Campbell, but understand her leadership responsibility to Northampton High School. I attended sessions related to vocational education, the school committee's role in district financial oversight, and the challenges faced by rural districts where many of our students live. I think all of us appreciated the focus on equity throughout the conference. And one practice I've asked the superintendent, who is also at the conference, and it was a pleasure to have his company through our learning experience, to answer this question, how did we advance equity in our district? It's serendipitous that the executive director of MASC, Glenn Kutcher, who I think just left, is here tonight. So, I would like to extend my gratitude to him and his staff for planning and executing such a worthwhile event. I was so impressed to see the number of students who qualified to receive a John and Abigail Adams Scholarship due to their outstanding performance on the NCAPs, including one of the student representatives to our board, Mandy Wright. My warmest congratulations. And it was a delight to read about our junior chefs from Culinary Arts serving a delicious breakfast to veterans and Amherst on their Friday off from school. And finally, I'm excited to be attending the Girls in Trades Conference on Thursday at Dean Tech, which is where I did my student teaching 30 years ago. I can't wait to learn about the employment opportunities that await our students after graduation.
Thanks, Julie. Mr. Quadro, anything?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. One item I would like to bring up, we have a request that has come in from the Smith Charities. Smith Charities has been very good to Smith Vocational Agricultural Schools. They made a donation to us on the fire. And that was money that was put aside to help rebuild the building that burned. But I'd like to just read it. It is addressed to myself, Dr. Spencer Robinson, Mr. Quadro, Mayor Shara, and Dr. Pearson Campbell. "I hope that you and all the board staff and students at Smith Vocational are doing well and have recovery and rebuilding after the fires going well as possible. I am a trustee of Smith Charities, and I'm ready to and hope you might be willing to support Smith Charities CPA proposal either in email or by speaking for a minute at the upcoming public hearing, which is tomorrow evening, 7:00 p.m. on Zoom. We have requested funding from the Community Preservation Act fund to do critical historical restoration to the Smith Charities building, which was built in 1845, restoring the stone exterior, rebuilding the chimney, adding added color ties, which will stop the wall, from the building from falling apart. The Smith Charities building is one of the landmark buildings, making it up the state-recognized historic downtown district of Northampton." So, I would like to be able to do this one. I don't know if you have any plans for that. And those... Okay. And I think it's important that the people that give the task, that we try to get back to them and thank them. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, a second, to approve the minutes on the October 18th Board of Trustees meeting.
So, move. Second?
Thank you.
And appreciate it.
That's right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Tonight, we have the school spotlight. Andy?
So, we have our adult director, we're going to Turner, who'll give us an update on how things are going with all of our evening programs.
Hi. I do have a little handout, open handout. So, as soon as you get the form, you'll see that I just did some graphs for today. The first one, which is A, I labeled it A, is the Fall 2022 Semester Outcome. So, this semester started in September and is going to be ending in December, just before Christmas week. And I listed all the courses that we offered, which were Medical Assisting, Electrical, a master's course for electrical, hoisting, home repair, oil heat technician, phlebotomy, plumbing, small engine repair, social dance, welding, and really, that's it. But the three that really stand out for the semester as far as what we need, I highlighted. So, blue, clinical medical assisting, and gray, the electrical, which is all three or all four levels that we offer each semester. And then, of course, phlebotomy. So, I wanted to really highlight that because they really do carry the adult ed very well. Medical assisting is our newest program. We started it about three semesters ago, and this semester, it reached the highest of all courses that we've offered, meaning we pulled in the most money from medical assisting. So, then with B, the second, the middle chart, what I'm showing here is those three programs, which, of course, are medical assisting, phlebotomy, and electrical. And I just kind of want to do a comparison of in 2019, which is when I started, we didn't have medical assisting back then, but we did have phlebotomy and electrical. And it kind of just shows you, like on a graph, where we were as far as what we pulled in. If you look and you compare over the years, you'll see that in 2022, which is now, we've doubled what we pulled in when I first started. I think that's just, you know, I do owe the medical with my background, knowing, you know, I do have a medical background, so knowing how the trainings need to work and getting it to reach what we need to have. Medical assisting, as I said, in that middle one, you'll see that it starts in 2021. If you just kind of compare it to last year and this year, you see that that even doubled, and I do see that even going further in years to come. I really do. And then the last C, which is years, you know, 2019 to 2022, that's basically taking both spring and fall semesters of each year with revenue on how that pulled through. When I first started in 2019, you'll see it's in orange, and then you can see, you can compare it to 2022, which is pretty much double. We don't offer more courses than we used to. We just are...what I'm doing is I'm really taking a look at what really works and, you know, kind of continuing to grow with those. As you can see, even from this semester, way at the top in A, you know, we offer things like hoisting, home repair, those kind of courses. They don't really pull in a lot, but they do give diversity to the community and what they can take. A lot of them are just basically enrichment courses, like social dance, and people look forward to those. So, even though we really don't make a lot on those, the community that does participate in those, they really appreciate it. So, we'll continue to offer those. And as we go, we'll just take a look at what other things we can grow with. And, you know, especially next semester, we're getting ready for culinary. We've got the CTI grant, and we're really excited. It's actually pulling together very nicely this semester. Tomorrow, we have an open house at the school. We already have approximately 10 people coming to the open house that we know of, although they didn't have to register, so we could end up getting more. And, you know, we're going to see how this goes. Starting in January, we're going to do another session in September. And if it's something that the community really wants, then we'll continue it without the grant. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Here we go.
Excuse me, I need to add, prior to Lorena coming, there were two loans that were taken out. The trustees had voted to use the trustees' funds. Lorena has paid back both of those loans. The first one was $86,000, and the other, the second one was $50,000. So, she's definitely doing a tremendous job. Thank you.
We appreciate your work. It's so wonderful to be able to offer this to our community as a resource, while using the school more, of course, at night, this is an idea of the after dark. But I know that our community members really appreciate the chance to advance their learning, and your management of the program just seems excellent.
Thank you. And I'm really appreciative of having this position. And I look forward to the future, see what else we can do and how we change, you know? So, thank you.
Good luck to them.
Just to expand on the CTI grant, you know, Lorena was lucky enough, but fortunate enough to receive the CTI grant the same day that we received the Culinary Arts Skills Cavalry Grant. Same ceremony, two different awards. And one of the big benefits of the CTI grant, and the CTI program is one of the pet projects of Governor Baker, of how to expand access to adults in the community who might be unemployed or underemployed. So, the focus is the state provides funding to the CTI programs. So, the participants don't pay to get into that particular program. So, it's funded by the state. And what Lorena has done with culinary, part of the relationship that Lorena had to build with the community, with the local restaurants, is a partnership. So, these individual participants come in free of charge to the participant. They go through the training here at Smith. They're going to receive some soft skill training through Mass Hire, so resume writing, interview skills, so on and so forth. And it's a 40-hour, basically like internship.
Right.
Paid through the program at a local restaurant, with the idea is that the restaurants, when they come on board as a partner, the idea is that they're going to hire the participants once they complete the program. So, from start to finish, an individual's going to learn the skills, they're going to receive some soft skills, they're going to have an internship that hopefully is going to lead to a job afterwards. So, they're going to get... We keep saying, this is like backup for restaurants.
The students really appreciate this.
Right. And I have to say, Mass Hire is working with me to get this program launched, and we do weekly check-ins. They're so supportive. They've, you know, any questions I've had, they'd look into it and answer my questions. Concor also, they do weekly check-ins with me. So, I don't feel like I'm alone. I feel like very supported with them. And so, you know, I didn't know that they were going to give all that support at first, so I was very nervous about it. But it's actually coming along very nicely to have that.
Just one other program, like, I know you're not going to take your own app, but like, and this doesn't necessarily fall into Lorena's program, but I think because of the job Lorena has done over the last few years, we have another partnership with Mass Hire with the Advanced Manufacturing Program. So, Mass Hire is sort of our regional employment board. They have hosted advanced manufacturing programs down in Hampton County, and they've been bouncing around to the different vocational schools in Hampton County, and they have a program up in Franklin County at Franklin County Tech. They've been struggling with participants over the last few years, so they reached out to ask if we would host here in Hampshire County. So, the Hampton County location is now here at Smith this fall semester. They believe that it's going to be a successful program. The lead teacher is one of our day instructors, so we have a connection there already, and it may turn into a more long-term relationship. So, basically, the Hampton County, Franklin County may merge into the Smith Vocational site, which would be great. So, again, I applaud Lorena to get this program up and running to the point where...
And that program is doing wonderful. I pop in once in a while, and the students are really, really working hard. The teacher, Ron, he's fantastic. So, I really see good things with that. I hope we do keep that.
Lorena, can I ask you just a quick question? I may not be able to answer, and it would just be anecdotal, but the people who participate in these programs, are they, is it folks who are like right outside of high school or after college and looking for some different or mid-career change?
There's eligibility requirements. They have to be 18 or over. They have to be unemployed or underemployed. That's the big thing. And so, when we look at their eligibility, you know, we ask them, are you employed? If they say yes, we need more information, you know, how much are you working, what's your wage? You know, that's all important and factors in whether we can accept them or not. So, I work with Mass Hire and Concor with that. But they also have to be able to pass a query, sorry. So, those are really the three major requirements. And, you know, there's been questions, you know, we've had people come call us and say, you know, I want to start my own catering business, you know, would I be eligible for this? So, those are things that we've been really looking into. The other thing about it is we have to be able to measure the outcomes. So, to have someone just do their own business, how do you measure that? So, that's not something that we're really looking for. The perfect candidate is someone that is out of work, that really is struggling to find a job, is willing and has interest in culinary to train in that. So, and then, you know, of course, along with the other requirements, if they fulfill that, they're our perfect candidate. And we will oversee their job prospects, try to help them. It's ongoing placement. So, they get placed in a paid externship, but after that, you know, we really want to place them in sustainable employment with sustainable wages.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, Andy?
Sure. I want to roll in the property subcommittee report. Here's my report, just to make things a little bit more efficient. Good evening, everybody. Just to break in some highlights and updates, and I'll touch on, Dr. Spencer Robinson mentioned earlier about the equity work. I tried to highlight a few areas in the highlights to make it easier for us to focus on some areas. But back on October 19th, we were down, the bottom board of directors and general membership meetings, I got a Marlboro, and I just have a picture that I want to highlight that evening. So, we were fortunate enough to recognize James Poplaski as sort of a friend of vocational ed, and that's been giving his award that evening as Boba President for the year. And I just want to share this with the board. We've talked a lot about skills capital grants over the last several years, and we've been very fortunate as a school to receive the skills capital grants. And, you know, when Mr. Briaco or Ms. Rady reach out to, you know, sort of the people at the state with questions around the grant, the individual who oversees the entire process and manages all of this is James Poplaski. And we've been receiving these grants since 2015 or so. It's been about eight to nine years we've been getting the skills capital grants. And that evening, when I was introducing James, I called him the Wizard of Oz, because he truly is the person with sort of the shoestrings. But you never see him. You never meet this man. But he responds to emails, he responds to phone calls, unlike a lot of bureaucrats at the state level. He is very easy to communicate with and get back to you and make sure that our questions are answered and fortunate enough to receive a grant. So, I met him for the first time over the summer when we went down and received the skills capital grant for culinary and the CTI grant for culinary. He happened to be there. So, I think I'm very fortunate, very lucky. Massachusetts is very lucky to have James behind the scenes helping us with that. So, it was a special night. Speaking of that, on the 21st, we received, no, we submitted the $5 million skills capital grant, which hopefully, again, will support four programs. But the big thing with that particular grant, again, is a reminder, if we receive it in the middle of December, three and a half million of that $5 million, we can apply to the construction costs of the Horticulture Building. On the 25th, I attended my first MIA Tournament Management Committee, also known as the TMC. So, as a reminder, the MIA has all these standing committees. The makeup of each committee, you have to have a principal and athletic director for each of the districts across the state for equal representation. You're also supposed to have somebody from MASS, so superintendent, and ideally, somebody from MMAC, so a school committee member. So, I happen to be the superintendent for the TMC. I know last meeting, we talked a little bit, Mr. LaRoe talked about realignments and tournaments and whatnot. The big move right now at the state level, and this started within the urban districts, specifically Fritschburg and Chickaby. Looking at the alignments in the large urban schools, so they were typically aligned to Division One schools, Division One of the big schools. And urban communities were arguing that that's not really a fair alignment. When you look at their student enrollment, attendance rates are lower, they have a large percentage of high-need students. So, even if they have an enrollment of 1,500 students, what is their actual core pool of potential student athletes? So, they came up with this equity tool, I think is the name, right? And the two variables that they're really looking at in the equity tool is around the attendance rates and around the percentage of high-need students together. So, basically, in a nutshell, you take your student enrollment and you multiply it by your attendance rate. So, if your attendance rate is 80%, you take your enrollment, multiply by 2.8, and that drops your enrollment number. And then your high needs, based on how many students you have in the high-need category, if it's above the state average, there's different benchmarks. And the higher you are above the state average in high-need students, there's a multiplier as well, which could basically drop your, sort of, the enrollment that they're using for alignment. So, the idea is trying to support the urban districts who have a high transient population, they may have a high-need population, so they may have a lot of students, but not a lot of their students are eligible, not eligible, but they probably don't go out and play sports. The challenge that we have as a vocational school, and President Nevada, I spoke of it this particular meeting, is as a vocational school, we should be looked at in a unique light as well. We have a large percentage of students who go on co-op, junior year and senior year. And that's a good thing. So, why should we punish the vocational schools for having a high percentage of students going on co-op? So, if a student is on co-op, junior year, senior year during shop week, they're not coming back to school most likely to participate in sports. So, we should have that sort of avoided as well. They told me the next time that you visit this particular tool, I would be invited to stay on that particular program. So, that's why I have as many volunteer. So, anyways, that's the latest on that particular program. So, back to the equity focus, this sort of the next bullet would be Ted Meisner. So, I met with Ted on the 28th of October, and this is sort of in conjunction with the collaborative consultation work that we're doing with Cindy Wees Bradley. So, Cindy Wees Bradley, which I'll get to in a moment, she'll be working with us on equity over the next two years, looking at equity audit with our policy manual. We'll be going through some equity walkthroughs with our administrative teams. We'll be giving the personal leadership training and consult work around equity. But before we start all of that much-needed work, the concept around mindfulness work. So, as an administrator, as a leader of the school, where do I check my biases? Where do I check my past experience? And how do I use that past experience and become more open to differences? Whether it's race or equity or just difficult conversations. So, I have my own personal biases, and how do I deal with that when we work with difficult situations, whether it's students, staff, community members? So, Ted's going to begin to work with our several administrators around mindfulness. It's going to be about an eight-week program. We'll be meeting weekly, starting in the middle of December. That work will get us through most likely January or so. And Cindy will begin to work with us around the equity focus over the next year and a half. So, that is step one in our equity focus, is meeting with Ted. The bullet, back to my personal goals, professional goals around the evaluation, one of them was the newsletter. So, on November 1st, I'm proud to say that Mr. Briaco and I were able to send out the first school newsletter to the larger school community. I think this is going to be a great resource. And we now have a professional account, and that's going to allow family members and community members to translate that particular newsletter into various languages as well. So, it's another nice feature to have. As Dr. Spencer Robinson mentioned, a bunch of us went down to the Cape for a few days with the joint MASC, MASSS conference. I'll talk about that in a moment. We came back on Friday. That Sunday was open house, which Mr. Briaco will talk about, another wonderful event, really a big kickoff to the recruiting season for us at vocational. Coming back, after that, we had a very short week. But on Monday, Ms. Carver, myself, Ms. Radyer, we participated in the annual CJ Shark Tank. I bolded this because this is another goal of mine, is to share with the board what's happening within the classrooms and within the shops. So, when we look at the competencies and frameworks within the Chapter 74 programs, one of the competencies is around employment and entrepreneurship. So, you may wonder, how do the criminal justice students deal with entrepreneurship? If I'm going to become a law enforcement officer, if I'm going to go into law, I'm not necessarily going to run my own business. So, how the criminal justice program handles that particular competency is they do this Shark Tank project. And hopefully, most of you have watched Shark Tank on TV. The concept is an entrepreneur comes up with some type of idea, and they pitch that idea to the sharks. And if they pitch it well enough, the sharks want to invest in that particular idea. So, we have the three sharks, that's Ms. Carver, Ms. Radyer, myself, and we will play, I think, pretty well. I am Mr. Wonderful, and I think I can take on that role. And it's a great opportunity. And at the end of the project, sometimes we do invest in them, sometimes we don't. But then the instructors ask us for the feedback for the students. And I'm always impressed, and I tell the students every year, I understand, A, the high school students, okay? But B, they're in criminal justice, they're not in a marketing Chapter 74 program, they're not in a business program, they're in criminal justice. Most likely, none of them want to start their own business. Most likely, none of them want to start their own business. Yet they're standing in front of three adults who have prominent positions here at school, and they handle themselves really wrong. So I ask them, how do you translate some of those skills into a future in criminal justice? The fact that they have to create a presentation, most likely all of them have to present something to some type of audience at some point. Second of all, they're going to be under a lot of pressure at some point in their career. And here they have three adults grilling them, and sometimes not being very polite to them, asking questions and pushing back, and how they handle themselves is unbelievable. And then just thinking quickly on their feet. So we're grilling them with questions, and they're coming right back with the answers. So I think there's a lot of skills that are embedded in the presentation that are above and beyond simply trying to sell a product. So it's one of my highlights, I mean, to be invited down there. And I think we, as adults, have fun picking on each other. So as a show of week, we had the election day, so the following day was no school on that Tuesday. We had no school last Friday because of Veterans Day. And so this week, yesterday, Mr. Biakka and I, we met with Cindy Weeks Bradley, which is why it's at Alasized, just looking at the logistics of how do we roll out the work that we're going to have with our leadership team. So again, as I already mentioned, phase one will be our work with Ted. And if we wrap up that training, we'll move in with our work with Cindy over the next year or so. And then about an hour or so ago, we had our property subcommittee, which I'll talk about in a moment.
What a good idea. Yeah, the senior goals involved in the equity thing, yeah.
So back to the property subcommittee. I know you can't read this. You saw this last month, I'll share this in a minute. So just another quick update, and I do have one announcement to share with the full board and the greater community. So just a finance overview, where we stand. The initial insurance settlement that we have for the building, the last part of the building, is $870,000,372. That goes into the pot. We did receive that $2.1 million skills capital grant, so $600,000 of that grant we can apply to the animal science renovations that are occurring. But as we discussed at the Board, our vision pre-fire was that we were going to fund the animal science renovation, because that was part of our vision to begin with, add a tuition revolving. Now that we have the grant, the grant's going to pay for those revisions, so now I can stand in front of the Board and advocate the $600,000 added tuition revolving for part of the rebuild. So sort of that shell game that we've talked about over the last several months. We already mentioned the $5 million grant that we have submitted. Hopefully, we're going to hear back early to mid-December if we receive that. If we do, three and a half million can go into the pot for the rebuild. Last equipment and tools insurance, this was a big surprise to all of us. We received a lot more than we anticipated, but the insurance will be paying off $421,445 and a nickel to go into the pot potentially, if we don't need to use that money for equipment and tool replacement. And most likely, we're not going to have to use a lot of that money for tool in the equipment replacement because of the grants that we have and because of the donations that we received. So that's a big announcement. I do want to thank Senator Comerford, she's actually a parent of a student that we have here. I think she really values the school, she sees the value of the school. And over the summer, she put into the economic bond bill a $275,000 amendment to support the rebuild. If you're not aware, I'm sure most of you are aware, the economic bond bill sort of hit a little snag over the summer when the state realized the excess amount of tax revenue that came in. So the legislators sort of had it hit the pause button, deal with the tax revenue excess. Most of you may have the check already in the mail, obviously, mine the other day. So now that the state handled all of that, they're able to go back to the economic bond bill. Surprisingly, and based on the lobbying firm that we have, we were very surprised that the state was able to come together and pass an economic bond bill. That bond bill went to the governor last week. He signed it with a few no's, but the amendment that Senator Comerford put in for us did pass. So we are going to receive $275,000 from the state. We can add that in. Along with that monetary donations that we received, and again, I can't thank the community enough, there's $39,000 and change that come from the, just community members, you know, thinking that we do a great job and they want to support us, so we can't thank them enough. Add up all of that, and we're at $5.7 million and some change for a potential rebuild. Sounds pretty good. Here's today's meeting. The property subcommittee, the architect came in and gave us some updated ideas, and unfortunately, an updated estimator cost, okay? After consulting with the estimator, the initial rebuild and construction cost that I was presenting to the Board back in the summer, that we thought maybe were kind of high, and we were going through the process with the architecture firm, and he was using some lower costs. Well, in fact, the costs that we were talking about initially were more accurate than we had known. So the potential rebuild costs, and we're not talking about, again, Taj Mahal, but we are talking about a total rebuild. There are a lot of advantages behind a total rebuild. There's hidden costs, trying to renovate that old building down there, that it may make more sense to start over. By rebuilding and having the minimal needs met, we're looking at a total cost of approximately just shy of $8 million. 5.7 to $8 million, there's a gap there of about $2 million. So the challenge that we had as a property subcommittee this afternoon is how do we close that gap? And we briefly talked about it, and I said I have to be prepared to share with the full board. Some initial ways to close the gap, I'm not sure if we can close the gap entirely, to be honest. One is to look at bond options. And we do have some internal revenue sources around the cell tower revenue. We bring in approximately $2,600 a month. Could we apply that towards a bond payment? The other thing is we have a tuition revolving account. Fortunately, or unfortunately, we've been reinvesting in the campus over the last several years, so, and as I just mentioned, we want to use approximately $600,000 already from that tuition revolving account towards the rebuild. We're going to be a balance of approximately $1 million maybe in that account. And as a reminder to the Board, that account is what we use to pay our transportation obligation for the North Hampton students who come here. So we don't want to dip into that too, too much. Another idea that came out from the subcommittee was potentially creating a stabilization fund. We have to look into the legality behind that. But is there a way, how do we fill the operating budget? Do we set some money aside in the operating budget that goes into a stabilization fund rather than tuition revolving account and use that as part of the bond payment? But again, just as the layman, I just keep thinking about a mortgage. How much can we afford, okay? If you want to buy a house nowadays, and you're able to afford a $2,600 per month mortgage payment, how much of a house do you have? Chances are, it's not a $2 million house. It's going to be a lot less than that. So my point is, I am concerned, I'll be honest with the full board, I am concerned that how we're going to close a $2 million gap to build this building is not the Taj Mahal I am thinking of. Did you do a good job summarizing that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kalyan and I went to the, and so did Ms. Scharder, Dr. Kristen Campbell, went to the Smith College Community Breakfast, and I had the opportunity to talk with Police Chief Casper, and this is not going to be any consolation, but she said they're facing the same challenges, where they put out an RFP and nobody bid on it because it wasn't enough money, even for the, I think, even just for the design of it, so they had to increase it. So it's like the money they had just isn't, you know, for our, did I say for our animal control facility?
Oh, my goodness.
The animal control facility that they want to put on campus here. So our campus is being impacted in two ways, by two buildings, by these very unfortunate circumstances.
I feel the same thing happened with the School Based Health Center as well. One of the reasons why the Hilltown Network excluded the pause button was they're looking at the cost.
It's incredibly hard to build anything right now. It's so discouraging. It really is.
Thank you, Michelle. Also, out of that breakfast at Smith College, I did have not too many, the president is getting ready to retire. But we had a sidebar conversation, and she said, is there anything you need, Mike, before I leave? I said, Cindy brought it up, I said, we had a fire at the school, we are having a problem. And she requested more information. Not saying that that's a guarantee, but that's another avenue for me to pursue, or us to pursue, in regards to seeing, in their endowment, they're pretty handsome, and our mayor was really, during that whole breakfast, brought up as being a student there, and he got very high marks from everybody. So you get Smith College, Smith Vocational, where you get your.
It's materials.
materials.
Yes, materials, right.
So any other questions about the property subcommittee, kind of the current status? The next meeting will be December 20th, which is the afternoon of the next board.
So how does that impact on what of the rebuild?
Step one is to hopefully receive early to mid-December that we receive that luxury grant.
Which is already in the.
Again, this is assuming we get that luxury grant.
Yeah, that's in our numbers. And if that doesn't come through.
Did I give up? No. I think the next step is, I think Crystal's going to look into the legalities around, is a stabilization fund possible? And one concern I have, I'll just put in front of the Board, that means we are setting aside operating funds for this particular rebuild. And I just want to caution all of us, because next month, you're going to see, next month is talking about budget already. We continue to expand our student enrollment, we continue to expand the needs. And on behalf of our facilities director, I think we need more support within our facilities, whether it's custodial coverage, we have, you know, things down the front that we want to bolster around staffing. I'm looking at our assistant principal in the audience, I think he's been running a lot of gray hair recently, and with more students, there really need to be more support administratively. So there's a lot of needs, so I just want to make sure that we make the right decisions along the way, that we're not going to hamper our ability to provide a good service to our students. So I think any answer that we have internally is a difficult one. So it's going to be a challenge.
Question. Explain the concept of a stabilization fund. Take money from the operating budget, put into a fund that grows in some way.
So it's a special account, and you, as the Board of Trustees, will vote on how it's funded. So, and that's what the purpose is. So some schools will set up a special ed stabilization fund, and that helps pay for special ed bills that they didn't budget for and stuff like that. So generally, they use the funds from circuit breaker. We don't qualify for circuit breaker, so that's how some districts do it.
So it's a legal way to have.
A special account, correct?
That means like moderating.
So as mentioned, a bunch of us went down to the Cape for the MASE/MASSS conference. And just to piggyback off of Dr. Spencer Robinson, my big takeaway, some of the sessions I went to, the general sessions, really fell into sort of themes. The first one was around school community roles and updates. The one around the school community role in financial oversight, which I think was great. The facilitators came from Worcester, some great information, great dialogue, back and forth. And the second one, many of you were at, was the vocational technical updates. And even within that particular session, there was a lot of discussion around MSBA and capital projects and building projects. And we're talking schools at the cost of $300 million, $400 million for a building and for a school. And talking about reimbursement rates and why reimbursement rates are the way they are. And talking about construction costs, so even though MSBA may say we're going to reimburse you at a certain percentage, but then the construction costs come back in, come back, and MSBA is not paying nearly what they need, so that's why the reimbursement rate just really falls down. So anyways, that's sort of the scene statewide when it comes to building projects. The second theme, as Dr. Spencer Robinson mentioned, is around equity and mental health focus. I noticed this was the theme over the summer at the MASSS conference as well. So student mental health crisis, leading and implementing equity, a lot of sessions around those two topics. It was great. I really enjoyed my time there. So staffing updates, you saw this slide last month, I just want to give a couple of updates around the HR payroll coordinator. Congratulations to Ms. Baron, also throwing a lot of gray hair. We do have a light at the end of the tunnel. So Emery Baron, who has a long career at the city in the auditor's office, and she will be joining us on Monday, November 20th, that's her first official day. So a great addition to us, I apologize to the city. So looking forward to it. The animal care technician, I just want to give an update to the Board on where we are with this model. So we did do an internal posting to, we have currently three farm techs. So we did an internal posting for the animal care tech, which is going to split it out to two different lanes. We wanted to see who the internal candidates, what lane did they want to go with. So through that internal posting, two of them showed that they want to be in the animal care tech lane, which then means we will have one individual in the farm tech lane. So because of what we learned last week, you know, about the financial oversight with the school committee, that internal posting, there was no budget implication. We really have those three individuals, and just what job are they going to be fulfilling? So we were able to move forward with that internal posting. But here are the next steps, and just trying to outline it to the Board. So the external farm tech posting, because we need to have two farm techs, that posting and then a posting for the lead animal care tech. So we have a lead farm tech right now, I am proposing that we'll have also a lead animal care tech. So it'll be an individual overseeing both lanes. Those two positions will be obviously in addition to the budget. I will propose that next month to the Board for approval. The thought is, hopefully, to get the ball rolling, is we can do a posting for anticipative postings, so we can do the two weeks, hopefully receive some applicants under the notion of it's anticipated. If the Board approves this, then that way, when that approval happens in December, we can move forward with hiring somebody in those two positions. So right now, we did some internal moving, okay? And the idea is, some concerns around the animal care, trying to increase the communication between instructional staff, farmer staff, and trying to make that whole operation more efficient, less stressful. And at the end of the day, a better product, obviously, for these students. So that's what we've been working on behind the scenes and around staff. Questions, thoughts?
Can you remind us of the difference between the farm tech and the animal care tech?
So the idea around the animal care tech will be an individual whose main primary responsibility is the care of the animals. The feeding, the watering, the bedding, cleaning, the, working with the vet, as far as shots, medication, so on and so forth. Really direct care of the animal.
And on the weekends and school vacations.
Correct. And working with the instructional staff to make sure that those animals are ready and prepared to then be worked with by the students. The farm tech, if you think about it in a traditional custodial role, would be the upkeep of the grounds, structure of the building, so on and so forth. So if there's fencing that has to happen, watering that has to happen, the hanging operation, everything that supports the farm would be the farm techs.
Who cleans the stalls?
Everyone, the animal care tech. And there'll be communication around the weekends and holidays, there might be some overlap. This might be a benefit to them, because by adding a fourth individual, right now, they're all working, how often, Crystal, do they work the weekends?
They split the weekends.
So basically, every weekend, you know, one of them's working. This way, by adding a fourth, they might be able to get into like once a month during the weekends, so it might be, personally, might be a benefit as well, so that getting So here's a, I want to present this to the Board tonight, to sort of dipstick the interest level, and if there's some interest, I want to empower the Board's policy subcommittee to run with this. So this notion came to us from at least one of the vocational schools. And the idea is, as a staff person at Smith, that staff person would have the ability for his or her child or grandchildren to attend Smith, irregardless of where they live. So as you know, depending on where the students live, they have the ability or don't have the ability to attend Smith. And depending on the community, some communities say you can come here no matter what, other communities are saying you can't come here at all, other communities say you can come here for certain programs. And we envision, and talking to the other vocational schools, there's a big staff benefit when we're trying to hire staff, I know I have the ability that my child could also come to Smith, I work here, that's a big benefit. I think that's a selling point when we're hiring staff and retaining staff. When we look at staff attendance, the data from the other schools shows that staff attendance increased, because you're less likely to call out when you have to bring your child to school with you, staff morale, so on and so forth. So the concept is, we would still try to collect tuition revolving if necessary, not if necessary, if possible, for the children, but we would not deny an admission to a staff child, even if the superintendent denies the tuition. So we have to work through that. That would be the policy, working through those types of holes. One thing I think would be pretty obvious, and it was outlined in the other policy that we reviewed, would be, what happens if a staff person leaves? Would we kick that student out? No, we would not, okay? So that child would be guaranteed four years' attendance here at Smith, even if their parent leaves and leaves. So then, oh, one other bullet, I think this would be a highlight for the Board, would be, what is the interest level? What happens if we look at enrollment and we don't want to handle this? What happens if we look at enrollment and we don't want to handle this? The board would have the opportunity every year to vote, almost like a school choice vote, this is not school choice. Every year, the board would vote to say, yes, we want to allow this as a benefit, or no, we don't want to allow this as a benefit. So it would still empower the board to have that authority. So the question was, how many children do we have potentially here at Smith? So I sent out a survey to the staff yesterday. As of right now, the survey says, we have 17 responses thus far. So again, to put this into context, we have approximately 100 or so, give or take, full-time staff. How many of the 100 full-time staff actually have school-aged children? It wouldn't be all 100. So as of right now, we have 17 responses. So 17 may sound small, but I think in the scope of 100 total, how many of the 100 have children? I think 17 is a decent response rate thus far. Of the 17 responses, I had two questions. One was, what grade right now are your children in? And the next question, no guarantees, you know, no promises, you're not locking anything in, but would you be interested in potentially having this as an opportunity? So let's jump to this one first. Eighty-two point four percent, so 14 out of the 17 responded, said, yes, I would be interested to bring my child to Smith. So I think this is an overwhelming interest level within the staff to allow this to happen. I think that's important to know as a board. And then as far as the grade distribution, the question would be, how many kids are we talking about every year who may want to come here? I know it's hard to see. The biggest year is the current eighth grade. So right now, current eighth graders, we have four kids. So four staff have four kids in eighth grade. So potentially, four kids might be looking to come to Smith next year if we approve this as a policy. If you look at overall, the majority per year is two to three kids, is all we're looking at. There's a couple of grades, only one child thus far.
Did staff know what the survey was about before they started taking the survey?
Yeah, so I had like a little intro paragraph to explain what this was.
So it could be that it was a self-selecting group. If you had kids, you're more likely to take the survey.
Correct. So that's what I'm saying, 17 people responded. If I'm a teacher or a staff person and I don't have any kids, most likely they're not going to accept it. But I think as far as the staff who have kids, I think this is a good percentage of those responding. Which I think is important for the board to look at the breakdown. I just, I wasn't sure if we're talking about 10, 12, 15 kids a year, that could be an impact on student enrollment and budget and so on and so forth. My other recommendation is that I don't necessarily want this benefit to take away from the right of another family in a community for them to have an acceptance into Smith. So one of my recommendations would be that this, you know, the staff children would be on top of the 150 students that we reselected in this policy. So there wouldn't be a negative impact. So if we're taking a staff child here without any tuition, that could be an impact on our budget. I don't want it to have a negative impact on the budget, so that's why I recommend it be above the 150. But again, if we're taking 10, 15, 20 students a year, then I'm looking at Mr. Parks, you know, overseeing academics, and he's going to pull his hair out to say, we can't put them in classrooms. But if we're talking two, three, maybe four students a year, I think we could absorb that every year within the academics, and we spread two to four kids out across vocational programs, I think we could absorb those students without a direct impact on the instruction on campus. So that's why I think that data is helpful to look at before we dive too deep into this. Again, in this, in this stage, I just wanted to, A, share with the board, get any initial feedback. I can take back to the administrative team and the policy subcommittee if this is something that we want to pursue. If this is a silly policy, then we can move away from it. I see some benefit, honestly.
And any child who's accepted would be grandfathered in even if the next year we voted not to accept the policy?
Correct.
So guaranteed before you're accepted.
I'd be in favor of that.
Would you say your primary objective is to build goodwill among the staff with this policy?
Goodwill, yeah. I think to improve morale, and I think to give another employment benefit to the staff, which I think is key. So, you know, we can't pay a lot of money for your paycheck, the opportunity to have your child with you here, I think means a lot. And we saw that during the pandemic when we had the, you know, what's called childcare, but the tutoring center. It was viewed a lot by our staff when home districts were shut down, and we wanted our staff to work here on-site, they brought the children. And I think that was a very strong benefit.
Really smart.
That could be also the advertisement on your job resource page, you said this is part of the benefit, like people work out of college, their jobs are probably free. So that could be on your paid recruitment.
Brilliant.
Do you think that the staff that lived in Northampton also opted out of the survey?
That's a good question. I didn't ask for any identifying information, I don't want to know who it was.
And it was all staff, so professionals and custodians, catties, workers?
Correct. And I, in that whole entry paragraph, I made sure I said employees, I didn't want to say staff or faculty, I said employees. Try to be as comprehensive as possible.
And would they be required to fill out an application form as student students?
Yes. So, I guess one recommendation, I haven't spoken to the admin team, would be, you know, that the student would have to be eligible for admission into the school. I think that's only fair.
Yeah.
So I can continue to talk and move forward. Donations, almost done. We have received, this is actually a past donation we received over the summer, I want to officially share with the board. Walter Sennell donated approximately $4,381 for the new and used tools to both our carpentry and cabinetry programs. The inventory is like a three-page Excel spreadsheet, there's a lot that he donated, so thank you, Walter. In the press, you can't read the 25 years ago, I'll just read it. "Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School Will Again Become a Halloween Funhouse This Weekend, Complete With a Maze, Spooks in the Orchard, and Pumpkins for the Youngest Visitors." The school has teamed up with the Recreation Department to offer the first-ever Halloween fun at the farm. Never knew that we did such a thing, but back in the day. And as we saw, there's a hard copy floating around, but we have a magazine star, okay, cover page, centerfold. Josh here, our IT director, was showcased in a recent EdTech magazine, just talking about how our IT program and what we were able to do campus-wide. And again, we have an IT department of two, okay? And what we were able to do campus-wide is unbelievable. So congratulations to Josh for the cover of EdTech.
Mr. Cotton, flood season, okay?
Yes, exactly. Looking ahead, just some highlights over the next month. The next two days, there's some administrators that will be participating in the NEAC vision of graduate training, this is sort of gets us ready for the NEAC evaluation process, so that will be happening in Oink House over the next two days. On Friday, I have a telephone call with our DESE liaison, that's Dave Evans. And Dave just wants to talk to us about grants, and wants to talk to us about some accountability issues, not issues, but accountability measurements that he wants to make sure we're doing. He is also the individual, because he knows that we received all of these skills gap of grants, he will be the one coming out to inspect all of these spaces after we're done. So he's somebody that will not miss anything, so it'll be interesting to look at on Friday. Next week is another short week, we have no school because of Thanksgiving break, Lancy Praddock. And in early December is the monthly CBSR luncheon. That's typically a nice, the early December one is nice holiday music and, I love that, we, secretaries are often invited.
You did say that in the last one.
Correct. The last one they had is odd. They had last month's luncheon, but most of the superintendents were down at the joint conference, so we had, Mr. Biaka just wanted to go on behalf of the school since I was down there. And then our next board meeting is December 20th.
Is the NEAC vision of reading graduate training, is that their own protocol, do you know?
I believe it is. Want to talk about that briefly?
We're going to find out more about it, obviously tomorrow, but yeah, it's a protocol that they have adapted, so we'll be able to supply more.
There's a lot of, a lot of districts are doing Portrait of a Graduate, have you heard that? I wonder if...
It's very similar, very similar.
As I mentioned before, next month, we'll be talking about the FY24, if you can believe it, our FY24 budget timeline. Mr. Biaka did a great job, the department had it the other day, talking about the timeline. We'll share with the board, make sure we're all on the same page. Be ready for that. With that said, I'll turn it over to the chair.
Thank you. Professor, please report.
Thank you and good evening. Our enrollment is steady at 566, as Dr. Lincoln over talked about. We did have our annual open house meeting, that was on November 6th. We ran commercials on local radio stations, social media. We also did that, the census data, getting the addresses of families to mail out postcards again, targeting ages 12 to 14. We mailed out about 4,000 postcards announcing the open house and distributed more to schools for dissemination. School councils also visited, sending schools for presentations. Not many, but we were able to go to a few places. And we ran ads at the Hadley movie theater. If you can look at, this is a, since 2018 through the current year, who took guided tours? And you can see that it's steadily increased. And obviously during 2020, we only had 105 individual families, that's because we were giving individual tours for strict COVID-19 precautions. So right in front of your nameplate. And student applications coming into the weekend, is something that we began tracking a while back. You can see, 2018 to 2021, we're averaging really around 25, a high of 29, a low of 14 during COVID year. This year, coming into that weekend, we were already at 82 applications. So that's, that's a huge number. And student application to open house, we track, we have that set up so that they can take them. Again, you can see that we're averaging in the 60s. This year, we have 51, so we're not too far off that number. But when you put them together, we're at a definite high of 151 applications so far. Thirty-six from Northampton, which represents 23.8%. Northampton tends to get their applications in early. And some of the other districts, particularly Rio, there's about three or four that hold them right up to the deadline in March, and then they batch them over, which I'm not really sure why, but those are the ones that also have their students fill out the paper copies, as opposed to going on our website and accessing it themselves. We have our own thoughts about that. In that pie graph, this was data that Dr. Spencer Robinson had questioned, if we could begin tracking. This really is only data that represents 50% of the people that signed up. When we inserted this after that meeting into our sign-up to say, how did you hear about us? We were already about 50% capacity filled where we're at. So, but you will see, 78% chose not to answer. We've since gone in and changed that, next year that'll be a mandatory question, so that we can capture better data on that. The high point is family friends. Eight point four percent are word of mouth. I would assume that's probably higher, but we won't know until next year, when the question is mandatory. Postcards were 4.3%. Social media, which includes our website and all, you know, those kinds of announcements, was 3.6. Other was 5.5. Nobody really chose the newspaper as where they hear about us, or the radio stations, which is interesting, that, you know, most of the people is really looking at word of mouth and social media and our direct mailings through the postcard. But I will be interested to see what the data is next year with the mandatory question on there.
Does our graphics department do social media and could they get us on TikTok?
They could probably get you on TikTok, but Leslie Skans-Hodgson, our librarian, runs our social media.
Could they, could she tap them to get us on TikTok?
We could find out about that.
Because that's exactly our demographic, the demographic that we want is on TikTok.
Maybe.
Therefore, we just...
There's a lot of TikTok challenges out there, Dr. Spencer. We don't...
My thought, my thought, sorry.
But I hear what you're saying, we'll definitely talk about it, look into that for you. Yeah. I am going to ask in the middle, right now, Mike Parks, our curriculum director, he's going to come up and present. At the last board meeting, there was questions around MCAS growth data. We were able to capture that for you, and then I'll continue on my report.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I know there's a lot of, I believe there's a lot of data in front of you in that packet, so I'm just going to try to make some heads and tails of what's in front of you. It can be overwhelming, there'll be a lot of trees in the forest when you're looking at it. I know in the past, Mr. Biaka talked about our failure rate. That's kind of one thing that we focus, tend to focus on when we think of MCAS, our mind immediately goes there. Happy to report that over the last couple of years, in ELA and math, our failure rate has gone way down. And you can see that over the last couple of years, it's even below the 2019 scores pre-COVID. So this past year, that was the best in math and English, and those are students that are not meeting expectations. Not to get too much, again, into the weeds, not all students in the not-meeting expectations failed, but that is the lowest category. And those percentages this past year were lower than 2019 pre-pandemic. And just, you know, a reminder that those 10th graders last year, the current junior class, came to us kind of in that hybrid model year. So they spent a lot of their academic year in that 2020, 2021 school year as freshmen in that hybrid model. So I think all things considered, that's a highlight and a credit to our teachers in those departments to kind of bring those kids up. You'll see that there's no science growth, and that's because of the nature of the high school test. You know, our students take either physics or biology, and the eighth-grade test that students are taking is a more general science. So we're not comparing apples to apples, if that makes sense, between the two grades. So that's why you won't see a growth from eighth grade to 10th grade because of the different test. It'll also say that there's no year-over-year data for science, for bio and physics, and that's because the last two years, students were exempt in 2020, and last year in 2021, students did not have to take the science MCAS exam. And in 2019, the last time our students did take science MCAS, there's a totally different generation of a test. The state had went through, changed the frameworks, changed the requirements that students needed to do, and then they also went from paper-based to computer-based. So it's really a completely different, a big shift, a completely different test now. If you do look at some of the growth data, and again, I know it can be a lot to look at, but if you look at the low-income students, the students with disabilities versus non-students without disabilities, the high-needs students, those with high needs and those without, those numbers are very comparable, comparable. And in fact, in some cases, the students with higher needs, students to have disabilities are actually showing more growth than students without. So I think that's also a highlight to our staff, because they're really bringing kids a long way, especially those populations that really need it. Beyond what you have in front of you in the packet, I wanted to give you an insight on what we do with this data. The data's not really good if you don't do anything with it. So each department, the English, math, bio, and physics departments, all take data specifically, not necessarily just the data you have in front of you, but beyond that, they look at item analysis, so they'll go through every question, and they can compare how our students did compared to the state average, and see where there's some weaknesses there. They can also review the actual questions, which can help prepare students in the future. They can also look at a breakdown of those, each one of those tests by standard, and compare that to the state average as well. And they also look at that year-over-year, so we can see trends. And our students are struggling in algebraic equations, for example. And the math department will look at that, and if we see that over the course, that trend continued over two, three years, we know that's an area that we really need to improve upon. They also look at subgroup, so the math department will actually sit down and look at their results based on subgroup, whether it be high-needs, students with disabilities, low-income, ELL, et cetera. We also take that data for each department, and we also compare it to other vocational schools within the region. So in particular, we also compare ourselves to Pathfinder Fragile Tech, and we look at how those students did compared to ours, because they're comparable populations to us. We also take that data and use it for MCAS remediation, so students that do need to retest. We have staff working with those students to prepare them for the retest. We just had the retest last week for English. We currently have, they did MCAS, math MCAS today and tomorrow. But our staff is working specifically with each one of those students, and really drilling down to each item that they got wrong in each standard, and honing in on, what was your process? Why did... Why did you get mixed up on that question? Not only do we know what question they got wrong, we can also see their, their answer. So the teacher can actually work through with the student why they chose that answer, or maybe something, maybe a word near tricked them in the way it was asked. Those are just some examples. I think one thing that's really improved the scores over the last couple of years, I'll give you an example in English. The English department, we pull the essays from last year's 10th graders. We'll block out any identifying information on those, and those teachers in those departments will use the essays as examples, as exemplars. Not just a five out of five, this is the perfect model of what you should be doing, but hey, this is a three that a student did last year. Why do you think they got a three out of those? What were they missing? What could they improve on? Or what did they do well? In addition to making those internal changes and recommendations, next month at the faculty meeting, each one of those departments is going to present at the faculty meeting and present recommendations that they can do school-wide. So I may not be in the math department, but what can I do to support the math department in their weaknesses? I may teach carpentry, but how can I support what the math department, what our students are really struggling with? Just as an example.
So impressive to see the academic students here, and that was the experience with my own students. I was so impressed by their, the whole educational experience. The, the collaboration among teachers and departments, I think, is hugely valuable. So in terms of like data analysis, right? Like looking at this, breaking it down, looking at students on it. So I'm wondering, how do you fit time for the teachers to do that into your school year? You have 185 days-ish, and time's got to go to a lot of different places. And then how do you create a culture where if my students didn't perform as well, I'm not feeling, you know, I don't get down on myself, but I'm willing to engage with my colleagues in an actual analysis?
Sure. So I think the first part of your question is about the time. So all the departments really are doing it on their own after school during department meetings, especially in the fall. Those first couple of department meetings, these departments are really focused on, on those scores. And honestly, they're doing it a lot on their own time. When we do MCAS remediation, we do allow certain teachers to be pulled from, relieved of their duty period, and they're able to drill down specifically on those students and dive deeper into the data so they can really be prepared about what those individual students that are, the three, or four, or five, whatever it may be, what they actually need. And I'm sorry, the second part of your question was.
How do you create that culture of collaboration among teachers where maybe my colleague's students did better than my students did, and, you know, I don't really want to be part of that analysis together. It's hard for me. How do you get, how do you foster that willingness to collaborate on that?
Yeah, I think it's not about necessarily, you know, the English department isn't looking at.
Teacher by teacher.
Teacher by teacher, we're not drilling it down that way. We're more looking at it as a whole, as a department. And I think over the last few years, we've also, with some of the recommendations, made it, it's not just only falling on the English department's shoulders, it's the collaboration between departments. For example, this year, I know that the English department is working closely with the history department on how they're wording open response questions or essays. So the English department is, has scheduled some time with the history department, and they're going to have an interdepartment meeting soon to collaborate on that, to make sure that the way the history users are phrasing questions.
Awesome.
Supports what the English department is already trying to get kids to kind of see. But I think, again, hopefully next month, you know, we're building those bridges again between academics and vocational side of the house too, about what can everybody do? Now, the recommendation somebody presents may not apply to that shop, but hopefully a shop can sit there and say, one of these four recommendations I can take back, that's something I can do to help support that department.
So you're really appreciating approach of school.
Yeah.
Mike, I want to really thank you for coming forward tonight. I think it's very important for the trustees to know, due to the press, not only television, newspaper, radio, MCAS is a big thing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think by the report you just gave us, that you have drilled down as far as a vocational school in having the academics available, where that information really magnifies what we've done here, what you've done here, what the teachers have done, but it's all about the end user, the student. And for them to be able to take this information and show anybody that we're, we're standing up on our own as a vocational school with our academics and be proud of it when they walk across that stage in June, that they've got a lot of knowledge, a lot of information that came out of this school, not just with their head in their hands for their skill, but with their head going forward with educational value coming out of here. And I want to compliment you and your peers of the job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. But really, all of the work and the credit is due to them because they're the ones dealing with all the challenges, especially over the last couple of years, and they've done a really good job, especially transitioning out of COVID and the pandemic and all the restrictions to pull it together. I'm really impressed, especially with all the increased students we have on campus. That's added a lot of other challenges, especially for academics, and I can't say enough.
If I could just make a one comment. For those who are talking about the student growth percentile, so there's the SGP, I'm not going to go through all the data tonight, okay? It is a lot. If you see a column that says mean SGP, that's the student growth percentile. And to put it into layman's terms, what that means is, the first page is English, that is looking at a student's eighth grade English score, comparing it to that same student's 10th grade English score, and what's that change in score, okay? And comparing that statewide, for us, it's high schools with a grade span of nine through 12. So other traditional high schools across the state, that number you see in the column is a percentile. What is the percentile? You rank 100 people, best to worst, okay? The best is a 99th percentile, the worst is the first percentile. So the person right in the middle is the 50th percentile, which is good, okay? So I just want to highlight high-needs in English. The high-needs students, first of all, there's 82 students, high-needs, only 48 non-high-needs. So again, put your teacher hat on for a second, the vast majority of students sitting in front of you are in high-needs. That's uncommon when you go to a traditional high school, okay? Second of all, as Mr. Parks said, the high-needs students in English had a higher student growth percentile than the non-high-needs students. That tells you something. So the students coming in, they have any kind of barrier that is identified as a high-needs, they are growing at a higher rate than the more traditional students here, Smith. Last point I want to make, and I'll drop the mic, is that coming from a traditional district, you talk about vertical alignment, okay? It's much easier for the Mr. Parks in a traditional district to sit with all of the English teachers from K through 12 to say, let's align our curriculum. So what I'm teaching, your first grade leads to second grade, leads to third, all the way up through, okay? We have 40 to 60 different communities that feed into Smith Vocational. There's no way Mr. Parks can go to 40 to 60 different communities and be here to say, what are you teaching in English in eighth grade? So we can be ready for the 10th grade MCAS. We have students from all over the place, from all different backgrounds, all different educational backgrounds coming here. And the high-needs students, those who are more at risk, grew at literally the state average, they're right in the middle. And I think rather than putting down that we're in the middle, I think that's a huge compliment to our academic teachers. So people need to know that. Thank you.
I just wanted to say congratulations. And I also wanted to know, when you meet together for collaborations, you collect a one document so that you can build it over time? Because when you look at your item analysis, then when you come together as a group, do you keep a document, like a historical document every year?
Yeah, so each, each department does keep a running document of looking at the data year after year. This is kind of the first year that we're doing the presentation at the faculty with each department making a recommendation, just not just within their department, but what the school-wide they can do. So yes, I do plan, I think it's going to become an annual practice. I have very high expectations from what I've already heard from departments. So they're taking it seriously, and I think they've already come up with some pretty good ideas. And I just wanted to also, not take it too much time, but, you know, something that just came to me, you know, about when people are looking at the data, you know, the English department, even after school gets out, the essays are released in late June, early July, and the English department is emailing me over the summer, asking me to constantly check, and they're inquiring about when it's, you know, when this paperwork is. So that's just one example, but they're doing it on their own time. But they're eager to hit that head start and do it on their own time over the summer. So I just want to highlight that.
One more question. In your professional opinion as a curriculum director at a vocational school, what are your thoughts about the board's recent decision to raise the cut score on the, not MCAS, the LA?
Yeah, that's a hump of a deal, but no, I disagree.
Can you elaborate? Tell us a little?
Well, I, I think that we've, we've come a long way. I think in the past, you know, I've only been in education since 2008, but, you know, historically, you put my historical hat on, looking back on where education was in the 90s and with every form coming out till now, you know, I hear a lot about the bastions of being the best ones in the country. I think this is going to put a hindrance, maybe kill some morale a little bit with staff that are finally feel like they're, they're achieving the goals that they were initially set out to achieve, and now maybe the goalpost is a little bigger. And I think that might put a little undue pressure on the staff, and I think that's unfair to some of our staff.
There were a lot of people at our conference who would, I think, support that. I mean, we heard it again and again from all different speakers, that now is not the time for that coming out of the pandemic. So just so you know, you're on that kind of solid ground, at least with that, all those folks.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the math and English, 2019 is when they came out, the next generation MCAS. Again, we all know what happened in 2020. This past year was the first year in three years that students took the science MCAS, which again, is the first generation of this new generation MCAS with a new round of standards going from paper-based to computer-based, and now it just feels like another onslaught of, of another hurdle that we're going to have to face. But I have confidence that we'll, we'll overcome the challenge.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks. Just to continue my report and finish it up, but I do want to say, I think the easiest answer to your question, Dr. Spencer Robinson around how do you build a culture? It's just the people and keeping the students at the forefront. Like Mr. Parks said, they're doing a lot of this on their own time because we have the right people in place, because they care about the kids, because they care about their job and what they're doing, and they want to do a good job, and they want to see the students achieve. And it's also, I think when we first got here, Dr. Lincoln Ofer, they had really just started talking about MCAS being everyone's responsibility, and we were able to kind of pick up that torch and, and continue on because I do think, you know, Mr. Parks can talk about it being here, but there were some silos around the MCAS, especially in vocational shops, you know, but it's all our students. And one of the things we did when we created a program evaluation tool for vocational programs to look at how they're doing, one of the indicators is the MCAS scores. How are their students doing in MCAS, and what are they doing to support the student learning in those categories? So it's, I think those are, those are ways that you start to build it, but. We continue to post for an agriculture mechanics instructor. We are going through finalists now. We had people that came in, they did teach lessons. We have, we have three, three candidates, which is really good, to be quite honest, to have that many candidates come through for that, that job. There's only a handful of agriculture mechanics licensed teachers in the state. Literally, I think there's four. So, so it's, it's good seeing it, all them would be new into that for licensing, but they all have the background that would, would comply. School council, we met, we began discussing the de-cap and also the process for updating student handbook. The next meeting focus will, will look at progress on the SIP and the student handbook review process will begin. Our first meeting of the student advisory, our youth advisory to the principal, will be this Monday. That was students supplied to be a part of that advisory, and they'll have meetings monthly with Mr. Sabonis and I. It'll be like a lunch working meeting, and we're going to go through a norming protocol, and we're going to begin to discuss the portrait of graduate protocol, or, you know, whatever version NEAS has to offer, but we're going to get student perspective on that same protocol as part of our process preparing for NEAS. And the Adams Scholarship Announcement, we were able to announce today, our annual list of John Abigail Adams Scholarship Award was submitted to Smith Vocational. We had 32 seniors receive the scholarship. To qualify, students must score in advance in at least one of the three MCAS, back to MCAS exams and proficiency are higher than the remaining two, following which their total scores from all three MCAS exams must place them in the top 25% of our graduating class. And it offers a tuition waiver for undergraduate students at Massachusetts State colleges or universities, and also I might add to community colleges. Just for quick reference, that number used to be like almost a full ride. They would cover tuition, not necessarily all the fees and, and, and room and board, but they would cover tuition. That has whittled away since its inception. Currently, it's $1,600 a year at UMass, it's $1,067 a year at the state colleges, and $740 at community colleges, but that still is going to be a benefit to people. I would like to just briefly enter the names into the minutes, so we were, congratulations to J.C. Bealoo, Greg Bydus, Carter Blatchett, Kyle Brennis, Kyle Broder, Kaylee Carter, Matthew Chasenek, Jessica Craig, Paul Devon, Connor Dominic, Anthony Dudik, Thomas Elders, Ben Field, Charles Florrick, Elliot Gomes, Griffin Gunderson, Marshall Ingram, Fergus Lagoé-Stowell, Forrest McSweeney, Gwendaire Memmets Murray, Elizabeth Murdock, Aaron Ostrander, Seth Ostrowski, Lily Ripley, Julianis Rodriguez Valentin, Amelie Roman, Christopher Thibodeau, Heaven Timmerman, Garrett Weber, Adam Whelan, Gabe Woodman, and our own Mandy Wright. And pending any questions, that concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you very much for your question. Crystal?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to report the past two board games I missed, I was taking a course through UMass Boston. It was grants A to Z, and I looked at them for the technical work along with the opportunity. It was seven classes, and it focused on starting, looking for grants to setting up a format. There is a second portion that starts in March. I'm still, I'll be ready to decide if I want to take that course. So, thank you. We're currently looking at the, the funding for this year. It's still a little premature to figure out where we are. Generally, after Christmas, that's when I start doing my forecasting and just to have an idea of where we're going to end the school year. We are, I mean, the one, the one cost center that definitely always worries me is maintenance, just because, you know, we do a great job of budgeting, we do get estimates from Chris Mason on electricity and gas, but unfortunately, we use that and we use historical data to come up with our budget for those. But, you know, you just, unfortunately, you just never know. So with that, there's nothing that I see right now that sticks out, that would cause us any worry. We, as Dr. Lincoln Ofer said, we finally have filled the payroll and benefit coordinator position. She starts after Thanksgiving, and I honestly, that position's been open since mid-August, and I welcome that position. The, the city completed their FY22 procurement audit, and it was in, Joe Cook, City Procurement Officer, has reported that we've done another great job. So that is, you know, we, I know we all strive very hard to make sure that we get that perfect.
You took one step further.
Gave you a shout-out.
But, you know, honestly, without hesitation, Joe is retiring in February, and him and I have a great working relationship, and just his knowledge, just replacing that knowledge is kind of been extremely hard. And he just, it just, I don't, so also the FY22 year-end report was submitted, and now we wait for the outside auditors to come in and audit that, then audit the grant. now we wait for the outside auditors to come in and audit that and audit the grants. The North Hampton Arts Council awarded the Woonestown a $500 grant. We received the check, and I know they're in the process of picking a, purchasing a printer, I believe. The city capital plan, we submitted two projects, and we meet with Charlene and the capital committee tomorrow at 4:30. The first project is a second part of the funding that we received this year from the city capital. We're putting mini splits in Building C, and that will also help with the air quality. And this is another stage, and this is going with the alignment of the city to produce fossil fuel. The second is replacement grid systems for both culinary and cafeteria. Cafeteria is actually over the, the, I already, um, I don't even have it.
One of those for the bakery.
One's for the bakery, thank you. Cafeteria, yeah, that's for the bakery, thank you. And so we're going to be, Dr. Lincoln Hooper, Tim Smith, and I will be on that, in that meeting tomorrow. The first round of tuition invoices went out in the end of October.
Excuse me one second.
Oh, I'm sorry, of course.
Quick question. You made a comment, the mini splits will help improve air quality?
Well, because they'll be ventilation, I meant ventilation.
Well, mini splits just circulate the air that's already within the room.
Right, but the, the goal is to allow, you know, just to move the air.
The movement of air.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we need those Casper units that we saw everywhere at the conference? Sam Rosenberg.
We'll get to that sometime.
Do mini splits not pull air from outside?
No, they're not, they're not, no fresh air's coming in, they're just taking the air with, traditionally, unless it's a hybrid system.
But that was the challenge, because we have the wall units in there that are constantly pulling, you know, 10% fresh air all the time, but we were, our goal was to install the eight, the air conditioning units, and to work with the city with, trying to get to, we won't be at N0, but to couple the two units together, I think that was the concern that Tim was having and working with the city. I wish I had the details.
So it's, it's in Tim's report, it's to, it's for the installation of energy management system to combine the mini split heating and cooling with the boilers and fresh air intake. So that's the phase two of building C.
Okay, thank you.
So we, I moved the tuition billing schedule up a month early. We bill, we take the tuition, we divide it by three, and we bill it out three times during the school year. So again, moving it up a month allows me to contact the districts before it was, the last one's going out in March. So with the fiscal year ended June 30th, that doesn't give a lot of time if they miss the invoice or if there's any disputes. So by moving it to October, January, March, gives me another month just to get, you know, reach out to the districts that haven't paid.
Have there been any protests?
We had one last year. Other than that, I think our bill, the bill that we do is very detailed, and certainly if they have more questions, they'll have to answer. So currently, we sent out 56 invoices, 2.9 million, which as of right now, if we were to forecast for 23 students over budget, we'll be budgeted. The cafeteria applied for a competitive grant with the state. It's a nutrition assistance grant, and she is looking to personally. Matt, if you have any questions, that's my answer.
Just want to say that I appreciate Dr. Lincoln Hooper and I in that session that we went to on financial oversight, and then we were able to meet afterwards, and so appreciate that the warrants that we signed, I think that the elected trustees come here to sign, but you don't see them necessarily, so now you see them, they're there, which is awesome. I think I appreciate that.
So this is a summary of the grant, the warrant. I don't know if you want more detail, or each warrant, because this is just.
Do you have enough to tailor it ready there?
And then I also appreciate the five cost centers, just summarized right there on that first page, for me to see, to just get, just to track how our spending is going in relation to the budgeted amounts there. And for me to be, you know, I told you that I want to think of the school's budget as my household budget, to get that familiarity with it, and this is helping, so thank you.
And I know that Tim left, is there any, so, any summary outside? Okay, right, let's go into our new business. At this time, we have a motion, a second to approve, in the midnight field trip to Charlton, Massachusetts, for the FFA Winter Leadership Camp, January 13th and 14th, 23.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a, may I have a motion, a second to approve, to donate a amount to be determined from the trustees account to the Children's Advocacy Center? The Advocacy Center is down back, that was our, our building at one time, and they do a great job with children in need that have been abused or been through a crime, or they filter these students or young people through that have been in a crisis. And they do a great job of doing, to calm and down the student, the person, the young person that has dealt with us, and they have doctors, they have rights people to take care of all the privacy and all that. They're doing a great job. I was down there for their open house recently, and my recommendation is we've made donations in the past, was it $100 that we were given? So I recommend to continue that if you want to put a dollar amount on it.
So is that your request?
That's, that's motion, that I'd like to.
Gotcha. So, but the request didn't come from them, it came from you for us to fund them?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And who, is it, is it a nonprofit organization?
It is.
And it's, where is it located?
It's, it's on Elm Street. It's right at the end of our property. When you're coming up on Elm Street.
Cross from Federal Street.
You go past that high school, and you're going, yeah, across from.
It's on the right hand side.
Gotcha. Next to the org.
It used to be the farm.
All right. And so we have made a donation to them this year.
Every year, for the last five years.
Like at this time of year, because it's the giving. So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion, a second to approve, Smith Vocational High School, making name tags for the City of North Haven Department heads, this could be covered from the trustees' account. I had recommended to the mayor at a previous meeting that they don't have any name tags, and so I made a suggestion that our advanced manufacturing could make the nice name tags for the city, and what I'd like to do is put the Smith logo on one side, the city logo on the other, and in their name, and that would give us publicity for paying for this in regards to recognition of the school and the city.
So moved.
Thank you very much, it was a lovely suggestion, and thank you for working with Alan Wolf in my office to come up with a list, and we would really love to have some name tags. Thank you for thinking.
There is no pushback on suggesting putting the Smith logo on it?
This is the first I'm hearing of it, but I, I don't have an issue with it.
That's what I was wondering, just because if I'm the head of the DPW, do I want Smith Oak on it, or do I just want City of North Haven to?
It's recognition of our.
Yeah, I fully agree, I was just curious.
There was no pushback when I talked to department heads, I talked to down the scale, I talked to many of them, they're, they're just happy to have a name tag.
Yeah, I haven't had, I, Al, he worked with Alan, so I haven't had any of that association, so I don't, I don't know.
I have another question about departments that, I don't know the departments, is, is Smith Vocational Department, so, and then, and then, so would Dr. Lincoln Hooper would be also, and is the high school also in the, like the two business managers, just wondering if they're.
So these were, I mean, again, I, I wasn't part of the conversations around it, but these are city departments, and it doesn't seem to include any of the school, and you know, MPS, or it doesn't seem to include either of the districts, because they're just, these were the city departments.
Would it make sense to also include them? I mean, are they departments, or are they not considered departments, or were you thinking just non-school?
I was saying it's non-school.
But it might be nice for them to have name tags, do you, what do you think about that?
I have a suggestion, how about we start with this and see how it goes, and see if there's more interest, and revisit it. What do others think?
I like it. That's motion.
Yes, that's motion. I motioned.
Yeah, awesome. Any area of discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion, a second to approve, an open contract negotiation in Unit H of our school?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Do, do we have a negotiation subcommittee? Do we know?
We, we have.
Typically, an individual from the trustees will attend the negotiating sessions. I'm not sure if we have an official subcommittee.
Do we know if we have ever had historically?
Not to my recollection, honestly.
Would that fall under the policy subcommittee?
Can you refer to the board?
I don't know, that's what comes to my mind. And I don't know yet how the process works. This is, so the admin being superintendent, Andy negotiates with Unit H.
So typically, on the management side will be school council and superintendent business manager, and on the employee side, it would be the unit reps and an MTA rep as well, who's going to be the council for the, it's typically who sits in the.
And it's more expanded, and maybe all the parties involved, it's a negotiation than anything else. And we've, I have to say, in all the years that I've been here, that our school has been able to settle with unions and do it a reasonable time, and, and to make our employees happy and want to stay here employed, and we don't have anybody picking our fun. And I think the process that we have right now works.
I guess I ask because, for, we have subcommittee, we have subcommittee for budget and property, which represents a lot of money, and it's, I think it's good to have two people on that, you know, two members of the board on that to discuss things, and same thing with the policy subcommittee, and thinking that that, there might be some value for the, if we were to have a negotiation subcommittee, to have two trustees to, you know, bring both of their brains and experiences.
Well, if you want to table this, and then, there's a subcommittee.
I, yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
All right, let's table this.
Well, we, we can go to the, right, to open negotiations, and then table the idea of a negotiation subcommittee.
Correct.
Okay, sounds good.
So we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion, a second to approve the following surplus for resale from Culinary Arts, a six-burner range with convection oven, from facilities two, student utility vans and Ford Explorer. May I have a motion, a second for surplus? Great.
Just a procedural question.
Please.
So how, how is this handled?
Tim, Tim puts these onto a.
An ad?
Yeah, it's a, it's a surplus.
Public surplus. It's a public surplus, I, that we use.
I was wondering the same thing, because where would you go to bid on it? I, my car's very old. What year is the Ford Explorer? No.
So, let's put it this way, anything they're getting rid of, they're probably going to.
My son buys stuff on those surplus auctions in Nashville, Tennessee, they have the government supervise all kinds of things on it, and it's a real cheap.
So do we have a?
So moved.
Okay.
I think we already did that.
Okay.
Let's check them. All right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Future business, December 20th, Board of Trustees meeting, five o'clock here, January 17th, 23, New Year, 5:00 p.m. And February 14th, 23, 42 seats meeting. Ian Julie, may I have a motion, a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.